Pursuant to Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. During the COVID-19 outbreak, the Tappanish Planning Commission will not accept in-person public comments. All members of the public wanting to comment on Planning Commission agenda items. May submit written comments to include your name and address for the record. In advance by email to cityclerk@cityoftappanish.us. By 3:00 PM on February 16, 2021 to be read during the meeting. Call in information for listen-only mode is (253) 215-8782. Meeting ID (839) 65899147. Passcode (187430). Email cityclerk@cityoftappanish.us or call (509) 865-6754 with questions. Go ahead, Al.
Okay, I'll follow the order. And we've been notified there has been no public comment, so. We'll pass item three and go to approval of minutes and. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes from our meeting? If not, I'll enter to entertain a motion to approve them as written.
I move to approve.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded, yes.
So who was that that approved?
Daryl.
Thank you. And who's second?
Trevor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm right. We have to do that for you guys. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, minutes moved and seconded that we approved the minutes as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Everybody respond?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to our next item, which is workshop. And it's introduction of the city stormwater management plan, which is.
So.
Very extensive. So Jeff Watson is representing the Yakima Valley Cog and will present the. Vic to us, I guess. What we will do, I understand the meeting, we will listen and then ask questions, but we'll do no approval tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, and Al, I do need to make a correction on the title. It's actually the City of Tappanish Shoreline Master Plan.
Oh, I should have thought that.
I was actually working on our stormwater management plan at the same day, so I apologize for getting them.
Okay, just change your agenda to being, or the minutes to read the stormwater.
Shoreline master plan.
Okay, and right now. Or means, yeah, stormwater. Okay. Then we have Jeff Watson. Your floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, city staff. My name is Jeff Watson. I was hired by the. YV Cog in August to fill the senior planner position. I come to you from. The Muckleshoot Indian Tribe where I've been the last three years in Auburn and before that I was a land use planner with the Kidittas County up here for nine years. I'm predominantly a land use planner, but they have handed me a couple of projects, some transportation. We also have, I've also been handed the shoreline master program. We have contracted through ecology with eight jurisdictions to deal with this little issue. What you are looking at at this, well, let me back up. Shoreline Master Program was. Shoreline Management Act was approved in 1971 by the state of Washington and was designed to protect and improve access to the shorelines of the state. Basically means a river with 20 cubic feet per second or more of flow, or a lake 20 acres or greater inside has been designated as a shoreline of the state. And the state of Washington deemed that they needed protection and to improve access for the citizens of Washington State. As they often do, they placed the responsibility of administering shoreline master program. On the laps of the cities and the counties. So the state passed the law and then handed the. Administrative process to the cities and counties to develop their plans so that they could have local control. You have a shoreline master program that was adopted. I'm not, I haven't been able to find out when you all adopted the regional shoreline master program that was made by. Created and drafted and approved by Yakima County. It was probably somewhere around 2007 or 2008. At that particular time. It was kind of deemed an experiment for this region in that the county drafted the plan and all the local jurisdictions that are affected. Simply adopted the regional plan and went about their business. It was explained to us in an early meeting with ecology that it was probably something of a failed experiment. Especially for some of the smaller jurisdictions. And we kind of got our marching orders that they would like us to do something different. This is actually not a rewrite. It is an update. It's mandated every eight years that the cities and county go back and review their. SMP shoreline master program to ensure that any changes in local or state law don't contradict what they have on the books. So that is essentially what we're doing here, but because we've got some direction from the folks at ecology that. The county was going to be doing a partial rewrite and he wanted us to go in our own directions. So having discussed that amongst ourselves and we actually checked in. SILA. Had some unique issues with their update this year, and so they elected to go out and get a consultant because of. Some rather unique circumstances out on, on and on the other side of I-82. Out in their urban growth area. They have some, some plans for that area and they wanted to make sure that what they were doing was gonna. Ensure everything was syncing together with what they had planned. So they went out and laid down the big dollars in addition to their ecology grant. They put in some funds of their own, hired a professional consultant to come in and work on. They too had adopted the regional shoreline master program with the county and work on that and make some changes. One of the issues. The first time I picked up the regional shoreline master program from the county, I was a little baffled about its composition and its administration. Administrative processes. They actually incorporated a lot of critical areas, language and cross-code. Into theirs and then of course the administrative process was, was, was. Tailored toward processing for Yakima County. Some of the adopting jurisdictions made modifications to that and adapted it to their local jurisdictions, some didn't. And so there's a lot of conflict with. The city's critical areas ordinances as opposed to what the county adopted and then the administrative processes of. Doing permits and, and processing of permits that. As it's written in the regional plan goes to the county commissioners. So obviously we had some conflicts in there. And so. SILA and recognizing this and wanting to go in their own direction, like I say, hired a consultant. They went through and took a chainsaw to the regional plan. And really trimmed out all of the fat, all of the extraneous language, all the. Duplicitate language and they were on this back in late summer. So after chatting with ecology and chatting with the folks in SILA and realizing that we had to do this for eight different jurisdictions, we thought why reinvent the wheel? So we picked up what SILA did and took a close look at it and adapted it for the purposes of the other eight jurisdiction. And that's what you have in front of you now. It is still in a somewhat template generic form. We will be integrating your administrative process for permit review and approval. As well as incorporating citations so that it fits into your code where you want it to fit in. That's one of the questions that we have for you this evening. We don't need an answer right away, but. It would give us a little bit of help in writing up things. You guys. Have a Title 17 zoning and then you've got a Title 18 environmental policy in your code. Right now, your critical areas lives in your zoning code. And then the environmental policy code is of course your SEPA language and all your processes for doing state environmental policy act. We can put this in either place if you don't, like I say, have a decision for us now. Or we could create a new Title 19 that is exclusively shoreline master program. So that's something you might want to give some thought to. We're also looking at the inventory maps. You don't have a lot of shorelines. Did I, did I get a map to you guys? I thought I did. Did you get a map in your packet?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it should have been.
You scroll all the way down?
Yeah, it's in the PDF. It's in there.
Your situation is much like a couple of other jurisdictions. You have a sliver. Just probably less than, oh, I don't know, two acres up in the far north end of the city limits. I believe that has something to do with your water sewer treatment or something up there. I'm not sure on that, but you have relatively small amount of jurisdiction and. One could even make the case that. Even that area really doesn't need to be included in the city limits of Tappanish. It's kind of strange the way the county drew up their review process and that they have this map with. Just a huge amount of area that if a project, a development project falls within that area, then they come back and re-review it to see if it actually is affected by shorelines. So. Our assessment is that probably this area that is included in your city limits is not affected. But. In the interest of simplicity and not rocking the boat, we are going to continue on as the state has mandated that the city of Tappanish provide a shoreline master program. The act of trying to alter something that has been entrenched in state law for so very long would be a real challenge and it's probably best. You're probably never going to get a permit up in this area in the next 20 years maybe. But it's pretty unlikely. So you'll probably in reality never have to deal with this. But the way the state law is written now, it calls you out as one of the jurisdictions in Yakima County that must have an SMP. So like I say, we've got a grant from ecology. You guys have a professional services agreement with us. We've crafted the draft. We'd like for you to take a look at that. We will again be making it more specific with citations and administrative processes. So that it fits in your code and fits your, your processes better. It requires one public hearing. It is a form of development code, so we have to follow your process for development code amendments, which is what we're doing. Your code mandates a review by the Planning Commission and a recommendation to the city council and then the city council will do the final adoption. And that's really all we've got for you at this point. We'd like for you to take a look at it. It's kind of technical and kind of slow. It's good something to go to bed at night so you can get to sleep in a hurry. But we actually proved, we cut it down by about two-thirds. So what it used to be was a real monster. And what we're hoping is that you guys can take a look at it, get a sense of. What you're thinking and whether you're liking what we've done. We'll come back in about a month. And hopefully have a hearing and a recommendation. We put in our public participation plan that we would have a open house. But in this day and age, we're not quite sure what that looks like. We're thinking about trying to develop some sort of Zoom something, Facebook something, something, I don't know. Just to give people an opportunity to get in and ask some questions and give some public comment in the event that they have any. And that's about all we have for you tonight. Do you have any questions about process or shoreline designations or?
Anybody have any questions?
Again, this is not a full rewrite. It's intended to be a review. To ensure that nothing has changed over the last eight years that would cause conflict with the existing program. So the program that we've got is the old program. It's just, we took a whole bunch of junk out of it that didn't need to be there. So it is, it is still is in essence, the same thing you've been working with. For the last eight, nine years. We just removed a lot of extraneous information and regulations, so.
There's nothing in there that you guys saw or found and think should be changed or?
Well.
For the, for the better.
The problem with that is, is again, we don't have the funding. To do that, this go around. There is some stuff that we think. Could be and should be dealt with at some point in the future, but because we have a gun to our head, this has to be approved by your city council by June 30th. So we've got to go through all this administrative process, all these public meetings. And those sorts of things and get this done by June 30th. Lynn and I have been talking long and hard about the multitude of issues that. You know, I mean, when we, when we look at Mapton, they don't have anything in their jurisdiction. But the state law says they have to do it. When we produce a map for Mapton, there's nothing there. It's just kind of some of the, this, like I say, this is thing has been around for the better part of 50 years. It is so entrenched in. State and local government and regulatory framework that making changes at this point, we're not recommending anything substantive. I think if you guys want to look at it and pursue some alternatives, we can certainly, you certainly have the ability to amend this at any time that you want. But for this process as defined as it is, we're not recommending making any of those challenges at this time. We can certainly assist you if you want to go in a different direction at some date in the future, but right now we're not, we're not advocating for any major change.
Well, I got some comments, I guess, on it. Is there anyone else wants to ask a question? This is quite a topic. And I think that. How do you understand everything specifically? We would need a lot of time to look it over, but I did look through it a little bit and. One thing example is the definition of shoreline. You did that and I'm glad. I understand what you said in there definition, you know, the old school like me, a shoreline was an ocean. Sure, but I see where it takes you to all the bodies of water, so I'm glad you addressed that. I see that. Well, I don't want to go over everything here, but.
Can you wipe that off?
I come to a part where you're talking about permits, you know, for everything that you're going to need and. We give, you cover that, but it covers also two pages about an exception. But what I'm saying is, or trying to say is the one that's going to enforce this really. Get into development and I know he's here tonight. It's going to take. To go through just the exception, exception parts of it. Is going to be if you're going to issue a permit or if you're not and all this list, so. It's going to be a challenge, but I think you did a good job. I want to tell you that. With all this document. The things you had covered and then anyway. I couldn't find appendix. Whatever, well, B and C to it that it refers to on. On about the shoreline jurisdictions, but. My question is, I think we got a yinu, yinu thing here because we're on the border of a reservation. Where the river really, we don't have any jurisdiction on and I don't know about the other waterways, but I think I agree with you. Just when you say there's not too much here in our thing to deal with, so. I think this is my feeling now and anyone else can express it, but I'm through here. I think that just need a brief summary that you give. Of the references thing that we just read will enhance. It will enhance, but thing that I need to know is, I'm trying to see my notes here. Who will enforce it? I assume that it'll be. Victor, right? I mean, he'll be charged if they're fortunate. The permits and everything that goes with it, so that will be a challenge. Oh, I think if you would tell us things like the. You know, adjusting the reservation and what it is. And in the interpretation of that, how will that affect us? I mean, we're not really too much owning any water. And does it meet all the requirements and regulations that are required by the state and county? Now, those are just sort of basic things. If you tell us or answer those questions for me. And I think we've got to go along with all the work you did because it looks pretty complete. It's just that it's pretty bulky. And the person to administer it needs to really understand it. Anyone else got any comments or questions?
Well, and again, I would just reemphasize, this is for your jurisdiction. This is a largely rhetorical exercise. Again, looking at, at the map, there's really a very small amount. Of area that's mapped and it's Lynn and I's assessment that it probably doesn't qualify as shoreline anyway. Because it's so far away and the, the plant and, and. Topography and floodplain just don't appear to us to be actually shorelines of the state. They cast the, this map, they cast the net very broadly. And it's like anything, just in case, we need to look at it. So in the likelihood that you have a project. A development project in that area, I think that. The first environmental assessment will tell us that it's probably not actually shorelines anyway.
Well, that's basically what I was trying to say. We mean, if this meets all the requirements. Any other questions or comments?
I have one. I'm Lynn Dietrich with YV Cog as well. Jeff and I have been working together on it. Or Jeff's been doing the lion chair, obviously, and I've been trying to do the current planning for your city and stuff, but. One thing is Jeff pointed out, there, the Department of Ecology provided what they called the periodic review checklist. And that's kind of what's driving this whole review of the shoreline master program. And what it is, is they have this list of state guidelines and regulations since 2007 up to 2019. And we have to go through that for the SMP. So. That's what Jeff's talking about is that we're just trying to be sure that. Everything that's listed or that has changed at the state level has been incorporated into that, that shoreline master program. And also. The intent here is, is Jeff and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but. There's very little shoreline environment in the city, but unfortunately because of state requirement. That lists cities by name that we have to, you have to, as a city, have to have that shoreline master program. And we, we floated the idea to the Department of Ecology, our representative here in the region, and he tried to hoist it up the. Flagpole to the, his bosses and to try to get some of these cities removed off of that required. Ment of a shoreline master program and he didn't get any traction. And so, you know, we're, we're just, we're trying to do the minimum requirement for the city so that. What, so that when the Department of Ecology reviews the SMP, they don't come back and say, oh, you missed this, you missed that and everything else. So. That's what this is all about.
And of course, the other issue is the county went off kind of in a different direction, so we didn't really have the ability to just adopt the county plan again. They're going off doing their own thing, so that forced our hand into creating a tailored SMP for each jurisdiction.
You have my thanks. This is quite a tour.
I've lost a little bit of hair over this one, yeah.
It looked like. Okay, any further comments, questions? None? Well. So what's the next step again? I'm sorry. You will come back and withhold a public hearing?
We're going to try and do some sort of open house, whatever that looks like, probably in the next two to three weeks. We're hoping to get you at your next, next meeting for a recommendation and then we will go to the city council. And try to get, make this as transparent as possible, but it's, it's hard times to have open meetings, so. We'll do our best to get the public notified and get some comment, but and we'll just have to see how it plays out.
Is there anything else you would like from us?
Not today.
Pretty long, okay.
We are of course available if you have questions or something just doesn't sound right or you need some. More maps or anything at all. We're here to serve, so.
There you go, Vic.
Check with your staff and we'll, we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
I think the one thing that I'd like to add, just in, in closing real quick. It'd be nice if we knew where you would like this to reside in the code. We kind of threw an idea out. Since you have so many. Chapters or sections under the zoning title, maybe you'd want to make this just a separate. Title or chapter so that if and when you ever want to do any changing to it, you're not having to basically open up. The zoning, so I mean, that's just a thought that we have had.
I, I can look at, look at that as well and.
Yeah, Vic, okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Vic.
Yeah.
Well, especially when your zoning code is subject to. Department of Commerce review and such, anytime you open it up, you open it up. So if, if you put this in its own title, you don't open that can of worms every time you send a modification off to Commerce for their 60-day review and. And then comprehensive plan and all of that other.
We'll look at that suggestion. Sounds good right now. Anyone else?
That's all I have.
Okay, then. Go on to the next item if there's no more questions or comments, okay? That brings us to item number six, resignation of commissioner on. Joe, we have to approve that or you're.
No, it was, so you know, obviously I put it on there for everyone's information. You know, he did send an email. When I sent out the, the notice for this meeting. And so. And so, you know, with that, I, I believe, you know, we, we need to try to identify someone else to serve on the commission.
Would I suggest, Vic, that we send him a letter?
Yes, I was going to bring.
For what he said, thank you.
Yes.
That'd be very appropriate.
Yeah, I, I was gonna talk about that and then, you know, I'll probably work with Lance to put that together. I, I see he's on there, so. So yeah, if, if anybody knows anybody that, you know, we'd like to recommend to serve and then, you know, we can, I guess that has to go to city council to be approved and.
Okay, thanks, Vic. Anything else for Vic?
No, I plan on having a meeting in probably two weeks. I, I know there's one topic for sure that I've, I believe Lynn, I've, I've sent him everything he needs. And, and then we have a second topic. If the applicant gets her package, application package incomplete, I'll have that ready to go by next meeting as well, so.
Okay. Okay, anything else from the commissioners? Comments, questions? Then we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody that came to make the.
Yeah, it's good to see everybody and see we're still healthy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Hey, thank you. Good night.
Bye, Lance.
Bye.